Township Parsippany, Troy Hills. Regular Township Council meeting, November 26, 2013.
At all good notice?
At all good notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Delhi Record on December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012, and it was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 10, 2012. Note: Council meetings or videotape in ear on cable vision public access channel 21 at 12:00 p.m. on Sundays are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino Esquire, Township Attorney, Yancy Wazirmas, Township Clerk. Please rise for a flag salute. When we're done, please remain standing. Mr. Ferrara, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to ask that we take a moment of silence for a former council member, Jimmy Vigilante, who passed away a little over a week ago of a sudden heart attack. Upcoming meetings, December 10, 2013, 7:30 p.m. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. December 17, 2013, 7:30 p.m. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. We have a mayor's presentation and a council presentation, proclamation to be presented to Umberto and Luisa Colluccio on the occasion of our 50th wedding anniversary.
They're friends of mine, Umberto and Luisa. So, the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills proclamation, whereas Umberto Colluccio of Conzedella Campania and Luisa Morano of Monteforte were united in marriage on August 11, 1963, and are celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary. And whereas Umberto and Luisa met through friends in Switzerland where they worked in a clothing factory, she sewing pants and he as a tailor. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Colluccio came to the United States in 1967 where they first settled in an apartment in Roselle and later bought a home in Hillside, moving to Union and then Parsippany where they now reside. And whereas over the course of their marriage, Umberto and Luisa have raised a beautiful and loving family of two children, Maria Luigi, am I right?
Right.
Oh, good. And Alberto and two grandchildren, Giovanni and Brielle, who have brought them immense joy and pleasure. And whereas August 11, 1963 marked the golden wedding anniversary of Umberto and Luisa Colluccio and is an important milestone in their lives, making 50 years of love, devotion, and mutual support that enable them to be the strong, loving couple they are and the good friends and caring neighbors they have been to so many throughout the years. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, the mayor of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, do hereby offer my heartfelt congratulations to Umberto and Luisa Colluccio on the occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary and extend to them their family of good wishes for success, health, and continued happiness in the 50 years to come. Congratulations. I have to tell you. Come on, we're the reporters now. There you go. You want to get one, Kim? During the Italian-American Heritage Month in October, I always go over to Umberto's house with Vinnie, and you're a lovely cook, let me tell you. If I had to go on a diet, I'd know not to be next to you. But you're beautiful people, and thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm not going to be as long as the mayor, but we have something from the council of our colleagues, from the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, certificate of recognition presented to Mr. and Mrs. Umberto Colluccio in recognition of 50 years of marriage that began August 11, 1963. Best wishes for a long and happy and healthy future dated this day, 26th of November, 2013, and it's signed by everybody on the council. Congratulations.
Anybody want to take a picture? Or the mayor stole the show. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Now open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, at this time, I open this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Please come in, sign in.
Hi, I'm Stephen Arnold of Fort Craven Road in Mountain Lakes, and I sent you a letter today, so you haven't had a chance to read it. And so what I don't usually do is read it, but I'm going to go ahead and read it up to the five minutes. The subject is "Use the P.O.D. Ordinance Regulations Themselves, Plus the Master Plan to Defeat the RD Realty Lawsuit," and also to enforce the P.O.D. finalization. We've learned that the RD Realty has filed suit against the council's rejection of the proposed overlay zone. This is despite proper council actions and sound reasons for the rejection and the reality that the township's existing P.O.D. zoning ordinance and the master plan are well established as the law, both of which were being trampled by the zoning change that RD Realty presented and the Planning Board afforded generous opportunity by allowing it to proceed to the council for unrestricted consideration. The rejection of the proposed zoning change now establishes the council and the residential neighbors and the environment all on the same side of this issue, united versus RD Realty and perhaps Belmed, who may have misled RDR into misguided confidence. I'm sure that the township and its attorney, John Inglisino, will handle the legal issues well. However, I offer the following items that can strengthen the township's position. Documents and testimony presented by attorney Rob Simon and others for the C4HSW organization add in prior to the public hearing provides strong evidence. In addition, I strongly recommend that you review the letters that I wrote to the council and mayor before, during, and after the public hearing for even stronger evidence. For that, my letters point you to the specific clauses and the regulations of the existing P.O.D. ordinance and master plan regarding limits on development intensity, square feet, et cetera, and requirements for buffer zones, open space, and protection of the prime Highland watershed of the Dorymus Ridge and the important aquifer underneath. These limitations and requirements are especially strong for the highly sensitive undeveloped lot Block 421 Lot 29, that is the subject of RD Realty's rejected proposal and corresponding lawsuit. In my letter, I list the letters that I've written before for reference. I especially want to focus your attention on the 2007 Stewart Study that I forwarded to you on November 6 with follow-up commentary on November 8. I found it with the assistance of Ed Snikus and Peggy Mater at and following my appearance and inquiry at the October 21st meeting of the Planning Board. Note, this was last month in 2013, but my letter said 2007 by mistake. The Stewart Study was done in 2007 in conjunction with an application by Embassy Suites for a modest addition of merely 5,000-plus square feet floor area with an associated impervious coverage of only about 5,000 square feet. Despite that small size, someone, or more likely several people, properly understood that each and every lot of the water view tract is restricted by the overall requirements of the entire 132-acre tract as specified in the P.O.D. zoning ordinance. The Stewart Study found that the existing total floor area square footage was 1,221,008 square feet as of 2007 versus the limit of 1,229,482, which is the .226 ratio. The remainder is 78,474 square feet, which was concluded to be sufficient for Embassy Suites's proposed 5,000-square-foot addition. The same evaluation should have been applied to the RD Realty proposal of 2012 and any other proposals about water view tract. It's easy to do the subtraction and understand that the limit was 78,474 square feet. And I'm encouraging all of you to pursue it and study it and get whoever, the engineer, the township, whatever, to study what I've sent to you at the beginning of November.
And I'm here this evening to speak to you briefly about the Greystone property.
This limit applies for any development, whether for new construction or for additions.
Along with a number of other colleagues, I was one of the group that put together some
30 seconds, Mr. Ferrara.
Thus, one lot using some portion or using the entirety removes the right of all other
proposals to the state treasurer with regard to the redevelopment of the Greystone property.
lots to that amount. Consequently, incidentally, it's in the interest of all the other lots on the water view tract to join with the township in opposing the RD Realty proposal and lawsuit. I've heard about 259,000 square feet. We need to get to the bottom of that. So, the rest of the letter I'll let you read over when you have a chance, but it's a pretty
We have not heard anything from the state so far.
important topic for you, I think.
There's never been a formal response to us or to, as far as I know, to any of the other
Thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Council President, while we're on the subject, this is the first
three or four or five proponents of what to do with this property.
meeting we've had since that lawsuit's been filed.
And I'm just here to urge you to consider the fact that this property represents an
Can we go into closed session when everything's done just to be brought up to speed?
enormous amount of sunk investment and of energy, if you like, in terms of the construction
We have closed session.
I don't see it on.
It's there. No?
Oh, never mind. Okay, it wasn't at the end.
and structure of the building, the potential of the property to be developed into a really
Okay, thanks.
21st-century community with a lot of ecological and other features to it. And I guess not to be convinced by the state of New Jersey that there is no other option for this property. My background is as a real estate developer. Right now, obviously, I'm no longer primarily in that business. I'm the founder of a nonprofit, the Center for Regenerative Community Solutions, as well as being a senior fellow at the Institute for Sustainable Enterprise at Fairleigh Dickinson University. And as the founder of the nonprofit, I've been fortunate to work with a number of other people who are architects and planners and builders, including people who have restored other buildings of exactly this type in the past in other parts of the country. And we were invited by Preserve Greystone to look at the opportunity here. We did so over the course of several months and concluded that there was an opportunity to redevelop this. Now, obviously, there's a lot of complicated issues involved. There's a lot of financial concerns involved. Part of what I do these days is finance clean energy projects through a program called PACE, which I'm speaking to some of the staff at the town about, as well as to other municipalities. We hope that this will bring an enormous amount of private capital to bear on improvements from an energy standpoint and as a result of legislation that's currently going through the New Jersey Assembly and Senate with regard to resilience and a number of other features that are included in the legislation that are designed to make it possible for private investors, along with the help of the municipality, at no cost to the town, to bring these kinds of resources to bear to work on these long-term redevelopment projects. So, that's basically my message to you, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm not the architect on the project, and I would not be the primary builder, but we are the nonprofit coordinators of the group.
We're talking about the main building, right?
Yes.
At Greystone?
Yes.
Okay. I spoke to Assemblyman Buco oh, about three months ago, and I encouraged Preserve Greystone, Adam McGovern, to reach out to Assemblyman Buco. Buco claimed that there was not a single company or agency that stepped forward and expressed an interest in rehabilitating that building.
I read six different proposals.
So, my point is, okay, if Buco's getting information from the Treasury Department or someplace else in Trenton, there's a lack of communication. I encourage you, I encouraged Adam McGovern, too, reach out to Senator Buco, and if there are names, companies, okay, then that should be going to Senator Buco so they know that we're serious.
Mrs. DePiero, on the state's website, there's at least a half dozen proposals.
I think what he meant was that there were no viable, I think the state made of a determination that there were no viable proposals offered, no financially viable.
Mr., I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Cloud.
Mr. Cloud.
Yes.
I read the whole feasibility report and the different proposals, including yours. Tell me if I'm wrong, but it seems that from the get-go, the state really appears not to be interested in doing anything with this project. Because when I read the report, after reading a hundred-some-odd pages, they basically came out and said that nothing's going to work, that anything that's built there is going to be a major money loss. Bottom line is, the state's going to have to clean up the site one way or the other, whether it's the state and the taxpayers or the developer. I can't for the life of me know why they're just sitting on this and not trying to give it to a nonprofit that, at the very least, from the money perspective, would be able to cut their losses. So, I read your, you know, your proposals. It was interesting. I wish you the best of luck with it, and I hope the state, you know, reconsideres.
Well, thank you very much. And I'd be very happy to speak to Senator.
What I cannot understand is, if the state is willing to spend $10 million to tear that building down, why they can't apply that $10 million towards some private investor to offset the cost of rehabilitating the building?
Right.
Those are the questions I had with Assemblyman Buco, and he said, well, nobody's come forward with a valid offer.
Well, you know, in any case, they're going to have to spend money to remove the asbestos before they could even tear the building down.
$10 million project to tear that building down.
Right. So, we're very much in agreement.
I think it was another $20-something million dollars to tear it down on top of the asbestos cleanup.
And so I'd be happy to speak with Senator Buco, and I'll follow that up. Thank you very much for the suggestion. If there's anything that I can do or others, I've been actually contacted by some of the other proponents from some of the other groups who are interested in collaborating, and we certainly have access to the financing that's required to do this. So, you know, again, the state has never spoken to us, never received a comment. We've even reached out to the Treasury Department. Nobody there has been willing to speak to us, so. But we'll continue to pursue this if you're interested in.
One last question. How much did the state spend with the RBA group to do that study?
I'm sorry, I don't know that number, but I'm sure it was.
It was a rhetorical question, but millions of dollars.
Right, and I'm sure it was considerable.
A waste, a waste if they're just going to tear it down anyway.
Right. Thank you so much.
I'm John Heebner from Danville, New Jersey. I'm the president of Preserve Greystone, and I just wanted to follow up on a few of the things that just came up. I don't think that, I think that the proposals were viable, and state claims that they all required some sort of state subsidy. I don't think, have been backed up by the state. And your estimate or your statement that $10 million to tear down the building, that is my understanding as well. There seems to be some question about cleaning up the site. The taxpayers are on the hook for that. In any case, there's no reason to require a developer to reimburse those costs, especially if it's a deal breaker. I think all things being equal, we're much better with the building, given a new purpose, than giving the county parks free land. With regard to the feasibility study, there were different, it is a very complicated project, and there were different scenarios, and depending on which assumptions you take, it's kind of a wash. But the state definitely chose to put forward, they very prominently featured the infeasible scenarios. So certainly, there is a recipe for success within the state's own feasibility study, but their presentation of the results left everybody with the impression in the press that, you know, it can't happen. But it certainly can. And part of the reason for putting it out to the public sector, or excuse me, the private sector, was that the feasibility consultants themselves said, there's no way we can think of everything, and the private sector will absolutely have other ideas to make it work. And Mr. Cloud's and other proposals certainly have other things to make the project work not dreamt of in the feasibility study. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about our work or advocacy. We've been looking at this issue in great detail for a number of years, so.
Are you a part of Preserve Greystone?
Yes, sir.
I get invitations to attend the meetings. Unfortunately, it always is when we have meetings, and I can't make any of them. But I'm in touch with Adam McGovern, and I support the efforts to preserve it.
I think the overwhelming majority of your constituents, the Freeholders constituents, feel the same way. People just don't like waste, and all things being equal, I think people would rather see the building given a new purpose, redeemed. The idea that it's something that should be buried and forgotten, I think, is very misguided. And I'm not sure what the thumb on the scales of, on the demolition side of the scales is. I suspect that may be it, that there's this idea that it should be, you know, they want to throw money at it to make it go away. It's a very complicated project. I don't know. But I will tell you that the deliberations are being done behind closed doors, and we've advocated for a more open process, and I think that's what's going to lead to a better result.
The history in that building is staggering. It's over 100 years of history. Be ashamed to tear it down and lose all of that history.
Absolutely. It's seven generations. And aside from the history is the fact that our forebears spared no expense when they built it. It was very, very lavishly and robustly constructed, and despite decades of neglect, it is a very, it's a viable structure. You know, the plaster's falling down, the paint's peeling, it needs remediation. It's, you know, it's largely a gut job, not entirely, but nonetheless, it's a very strong structure and one that will last a very long time if it's taken care of. And there's value in that, too. And conversely, the cost of tearing down something so massive is enormous and a waste, quite frankly. I mean, and wherever the idea that it should just go away is coming from, I think by and large, public sentiment is that we're better off with it than without it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. John, you know, the last few years, that roof has really deteriorated from the storms.
Yes, indeed.
But I'm just, I know, obviously, you know this, but we all, the roof and the top floor hold no historic significance, so if the state wants to argue that because of the deterioration from over the last few years, that really isn't a practical answer of why the building should come down.
No, not at all. And actually, I'm glad you, if I may, I'm glad you brought up the roof, because any developer would have access to a 20% federal historic tax credit. The period of significance for the building does not include the roof, which was completely replaced in the 20s and 30s. Therefore, a developer would have carte blanche with the roof and could use the best practices of solar panels, greenhouses, all that on the top, get all the tax credits for that, which is something Mr. Cloud could talk more about than I could, and still get the federal historic tax credit. I mean, there's a great opportunity here to use the best of new and old. But no, that's not reason. Yes.
I just don't want, I just don't want the state to come back and say.
No, they really haven't come up with a good reason. They've, you know, Bill Quinn has made several statements, and none of them really stand up to any kind of examination. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no one else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll take his lead. I'll sign in after. My name's Jim Wargo from 45 Robin Hood. I don't live anywhere near the proposed water view tract, but I mean, I kind of have my own reasons to agree with the people that do live there, that to rezone or to rechange something in the master plan I don't agree with, but personal reasons, I've, you know, have a project going on behind my house that had no rezoning at all except for modification to a height, and, you know, there's just been, it just doesn't seem to be within the town the means to monitor construction projects like that. Once it goes through the process, everyone stamps, it looks good, the construction companies get rolling, and until someone like myself says, hey, it's four feet too high, or they're cutting down trees that no one said they should cut down, nothing happens. Right now, I lost 25 trees behind my house from September of 2012 to this past October. And, you know, I have to wait through the process for, you know, the forester to write a summons, and eventually, they might get replanted. So, that's why I don't agree with any rezoning, and there was a master plan. I mean, I understand there could be some modifications of front parking, rear parking. Sometimes there has to be some minor concessions, but to have these developers bully, you know, the town and townspeople, I don't agree with that. The other thing I think the town should look at is the whole idea of, like, using an outside contractor, like Burgess Associates, to be a planner. You know, they're on both sides of the fence here. They're representing builders, and they're also representing towns, so I don't know where their heart lies. You know, you have people like James Walsh is a forester, I think he lives in the town. You can just tell he believes in his job. I don't get the same feeling from Mr. Snikus. I mean, he's a professional. He knows what he's doing. He's a smart person, but where does his loyalty lie? You know, he's a professional individual, you know, a gun for hire, basically. So, as a town, especially the size of Parsippany, I don't know why we're outsourcing that amount of responsibility to someone like that. my house from September of 2012 to this past October. And, you know, I have to wait through the process for, you know, the forester to write a summons, and eventually, they might get replanted. So that's why I don't agree with any rezoning. And there was a master plan. I mean, I understand there could be some modifications of front parking, rear parking. Sometimes there has to be some minor concessions, but to have these developers bully, you know, the town and townspeople, I don't agree with that. The other thing I think the town should look at is the whole idea of like using an outside contractor, like Burgess Associates, to be a planner. You know, they're on both sides of the fence here. They're representing builders, and they're also representing towns. So I don't know where their heart lies. You know, you have people like James Walsh as a forester. I think he lives in the town. You can just tell he believes in his job. I don't get the same feeling from Mr. Snikus. I mean, he's a professional. He knows what he's doing. He's a smart person, but where does his loyalty lie? You know, he's a professional individual, you know, a gun for hire, basically. So as a town, especially the size of Parsippany, I don't know why we're outsourcing that amount of responsibility to someone like that. I guess that's it. Like I said, I'm still waiting on things that weren't supposed to happen behind my house. And it's just weird how this whole process works. You ask questions and until I can prove something, nothing happens. That's an RL zone. Right now, it's the Deutsche Bank, and they've turned into basically a data center, which I don't think is an approved use of that zone behind my house. And a data center or digital data storage is different than a office building, because there's equipment that runs 24/7. You know, if you think about one bumblebee, you know, it doesn't make any noise, not really. But take a thousand of them, and they make some noise. You know, wow, where's that swarm coming from? Well, on that roof, there's a hundred rooftop units, at least. And this summer, they were craning more stuff up. And, you know, it just, you just, I don't think anyone's really looking at what's going on. And it's like trying to get someone to do anything, it's very difficult. And does it come down to finances? And, you know, they're paying a million dollars in taxes. And, you know, it's kind of like, there's a balance. But again, it just gets very frustrating. This is my binder on information and memos and trying to get things done. And this is without any real concession of reducing the buffer. Imagine if they got the okay to reduce the buffer. I mean, it'd just be obscene. So that's all I got to say on that.
They ever lowered the structure? I remember the last time you were here.
Yeah, they did. I mean, that's the weird thing about it. That's the only thing that has any teeth, is like the construction code, because that goes back to the state. So like that was the thing that would like slam dunk, like, don't mess with the plumbing inspectors, don't mess with the electrical inspectors. But once you get outside of that realm, it's like, eh. I mean, stuff happens, but it's not of the same, like, ferocity that you'd expect. I had a comment by Ed Snikus was, don't worry, Deutsche Bank won't mess with the township of Parsippany. And I left that meeting, oh, that sounds good. You know, this is how this process works. They'll take care of it. And it just stall after stall after stall after email. And I feel like a pest, but it's like, without it, you know, it doesn't get done. And, you know, again, I don't expect instantaneous results, but it's, you know, when we're talking about August of 12 and a meeting in January of 13, and then, you know, then they come along and cut down more trees this summer. It's like, if I was a contractor, it doesn't seem like there's any repercussion. Do what you want, get paid big bucks from whoever you're working for. Maybe plant a few trees, maybe not. And that's what I mean. If you want to be dishonest, you want to make some money, be, again, there's probably some honest ones. I apologize right in the room, but I think everyone's seen, you know, where the construction industry goes.
You mean they cut more trees down behind your house after we had that meeting here?
Yes. That's what I mean. You would think, you would think after the first time, and whatever might have happened, it would be like a no-brainer. And then it was like, another 10 were gone.
How did they go about doing that? When we, I thought Mr. Snikus was going out there and they looked at it, and where they caught him with building it too high.
I don't know. That's what I mean. It's just like, I just have a book full of memos and weird comments, and no one's taking responsibility.
Why would they even cut the trees down? It's across the street from those panels anyway.
No, they built right behind them. I mean, that's even what Mr. Walsh says. Really, there should be no benefit as far as sun, but it might be due to debris. It might be due to they have to clean them more. They made some lame excuse, something supposedly fell on one of them, so they wanted to prevent anything more.
All right, sir, I have to cut you off just in a second.
Thank you. Thanks.
Pat Patacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Brian?
Yes.
I'd just like to know, a couple of meetings ago, I asked that whether Ball and Summit could be put on the agenda. And you verified with Jasmine that it could be. I don't know if it was, so could you just check?
I don't see it on there now.
Ball and Summit. Those who were told that the money was in the budget to have those streets worked on this year.
Can we look to make sure that that's at the next meeting?
Well, I mean, I don't think.
Well, I mean, I know they're not going to be fixed right away, but can we look into?
Well.
Normally, when it's on the agenda, it's being either looked at or getting ready to be worked on. But it's there.
It's already being worked on.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Is it an engineering report?
It's a capital project that was in the budget, so.
So I was just asking that it get put on the agenda so it doesn't get forgotten.
Where on the agenda?
Yeah, where would that, that doesn't.
In the, with the.
Something they need to take motion.
They used to always put them in with every, that long list that's been out there for five years now.
That's engineer, but if it's in the capital budget to be improved, it's in the budget.
It's not going to go there?
No, no, that's only for stuff that upcoming changes and stuff engineer.
We don't usually put capital projects in the engineers report.
I don't know. I know it was on it for Hawkins and Conde when they were done. It was on the agenda.
There were drainage problems with Hawkins, that's why the engineer.
Well, it was the same thing with Ball.
Was involved then.
Ball is the same thing. It was a drainage problem also from the high school as well as the church, if you remember, from the very beginning. It was all drainage problems that created and asked for everything to be done. If you go back to, what's his name? Pooch. His reports will show you that. That it was both areas. All those streets were flooding. And that was the reason it was supposed to be done. And that is the reason why eight years later, I'm still up here trying to get it done. Okay, number two. With the Waterview, we had heard all through Waterview that we couldn't use open space money. That's what the mayor had been saying. And then finally, when it was rejected, the mayor had said that, yes, now we'll go to open space, see if we can use their money. Now, this was before I went on vacation. I had heard a rumor that if a certain person supported our mayor in this election, that he would have a seat on this ad hoc committee. Now, there is an ad hoc committee. Does anybody know an ad hoc committee was created for this open space? I haven't seen anything on it, never acknowledgement. But yet, I see something on today's agenda about another committee being formed. So I'm getting confused as to when committees go on and the people know about them. Now, the person I'm talking about, I don't know if you want their name, I can give you their name. But this person is now sitting on this ad hoc committee, okay? Now, first of all, my question is to you, where as council members, were you consulted before this committee was formed? Did you have any input on who was part of this committee? I, as a resident, would like to know what this committee is about, who's on it, and what exactly they're working on. I mean, I think residents have a right to know when committees are formed and what has to be done with them. And why isn't the open space committee itself involved in this? And again, who were the other members on the ad hoc committee? Another rumor I heard, and I'm being very concerned about this rumor. I heard that if another member of our town, give you initials, if they threw their support behind Mayor Barbario, they would be finding themselves a job in this township. One rumor came true so far. This rumor comes true, and this person is placed in a township job.
Thirty seconds.
I will be the first person up here, okay? If you want a name, come see me, I'll give you the name. And what I'd really like this council to do as soon as possible is to acknowledge Mr. Vigilante with a plaque outside, like all the other council members, please. He is worth it.
We're planning to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm sure everybody in the community does. Thank you.
Pat, I wasn't placed on that ad hoc committee, just to let you know.
Seeing no one else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creepy Roll Call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless council members' request, in which case the item be removed from consent agenda, considering its normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction. Ordinance 2013, column 31, Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, providing for the acquisition by purchase and/or elevation of properties, including all structures, work equipment, and materials necessary therefore or incidental thereto in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and County Open Space Flood Mitigation Program, and appropriating $9,626,941, therefore. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 10, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance.
Second.
Be it further resolved that clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Ferrar, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 32, Mr. Ferrar.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, accepting dedication of a portion of Block 448, Lot 23, as shown on the official tax map of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, for future roadway purposes, from 78 Fanny Road LLC. Be it further resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading, at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013. And said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon as thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law. Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrar, second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 33, Mr. Creepy.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing a license agreement with Rainbow Lakes Community Club, Inc., for the license of property known as a portion of Block 106, Lots 5 and 13.01, as shown on the official tax map of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Creepy, second by Mr. Nelson, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 34, Mr. Nelson.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing an amendment to the lease agreement with the Troy Hills Memorial Post Number 10184, veterans of foreign wars of the United States concerning premises located at 220 Troy Road, Block 728, Lot 5, in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, so as to extend the term of the lease for an additional five years. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Motion by Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Creepy, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 35, Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 290, Parks, Recreation Areas, and Public Lands, Article 2, Use Regulations, permanent requirements of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced and read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Second. Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Ferrar, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 36, Mr. Ferrar.
An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Section 4-66, Meeting, Hearing, and Appeals of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading, at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage, at the meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon as thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrar, second by Mr. Creepy, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, column 37, Mr. Creepy.
Ordinance authorizing the business administrator of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills to execute and renew as necessary a lease with the building maintenance superintendent of Craftsman Farms. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on November 26, 2013. And that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 17, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper, according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Creepy, second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Ingsina?
Yeah, I think the motion should just be amended to clarify that the purpose of the, or let me just amend the motion, but clarify that the purpose of going into closed session is to discuss ongoing litigation involving the township.
Okay, resolution. Where is the Open Public Meeting Act? Public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, which it tells.
the Township Council, in the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, where the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, contract negotiations, and litigation, where its limits will be kept. Once a matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, dominions can be made public. Now, therefore, be resolved by Township Council of Parsippany Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrar to reconvene into open session, second by Mr. Creepy. Roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Resolutions, non-consent agenda, or 2013-212. Mr. Nelson?
You know what, Mr. Council President, I like to table this resolution.
Second.
Motion to table 2013-212 by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrar. Roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-229. Mr. DePiero.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and awarding a contract for professional planning services to Burgess Associates, Inc. Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrar. Roll call.
Hold on, one second, Ms. Council President. Just, yeah, a quick discussion, quick question.
Okay.
Jasmine, is she here? Oh, sorry. Why are we doing this so late in the year? Burgess.
All right. Okay, then, this is for the 2013 year we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay, then I suggest we do the 2014 year in January?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
So this will expire at the end of the year?
Yes. Yes.
Has he, has Burgess been being paid throughout the year?
Yes.
So they've just been, in essence, a holdover by mistake?
Well, not by mistake, but a holdover.
All right.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-230. Mr. Ferrar.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing the Governor's Council of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Physical Grand, extension January 1, 2014, to June 30, 2014. Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrar, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Creepy?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Or 2013-231. Mr. Creepy.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, requesting review and approval of a second amendment to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust